We'll move up to properly second to come out of closed session. Um, or to return from closed session, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Um, we will now ask the court to read the certification of the closed session.
Whereas the Kingland County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative reported vote at an important change of provisions under the Virginia Freedom of Independence. And whereas, section two point two dash three seven one two D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board that such executive meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Kingland County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully extended from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the executive meeting to which this certification applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the executive meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Okay, can I get a motion to certify closed session?
Motion to certify.
Second, if we move to properly section, second, Ms. Hudson, would you please hold the board?
Mr. Farmer?
I certify.
Mr. Wassenberg?
I certify.
Ms. Atkins?
I certify.
Ms. Catherine?
I certify.
Ms. Rachel?
I certify.
So now we're gonna move on to item number three of our evening. And if you wouldn't let everybody who's able to please stand and let's see the question. Do we thank you? May I have a seat? Next, item number four, changes to the agenda. Wagner, do you have any changes to our agenda for tonight?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening to you, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board. Welcome to our guest in the audience this evening, and to those of our staff members that have been able to join us. We appreciate you being here. Hope everybody's having an enjoyable summer so far. It's hard to believe that we are in mid-July, and we will have students and staff back in just a little over month. And uh, the summer is really flying by, but we're thrilled that you're with us tonight. Madam Chair, I have three very brief additions to the agenda, if, if I may. First, I would like to add item eight point four, under superintendent items, and that item will be titled "School Budget Clarification." Just wanted to bring a very brief clarification to address some potential misconceptions that might be circulating out there. Uh, second, I would like to add item ten point two, under finance, titled "Update on Federal Funding Freeze." And that'll give Mrs. Middles an opportunity to share a very brief update regarding the nationwide freeze on some federal funding. And then third is, would just like to offer a very quick comment at the very end of the agenda for one of our announcements about national night out. So those of you who only need changes that I have to the agenda, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Board members, does anyone have any, um, changes, additions, or substitutions to the agenda? Then I'll entertain a motion to accept the agenda as amended.
Motion to accept.
Second, moving properly second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. We have an agenda for tonight. Next item on our agenda for tonight is item number five, the consent agenda. And we have ten items on our consent agenda tonight.
I make a I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
So moving properly second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. And our consent agenda is approved. Number six is our strategic spotlight, and tonight we have an update on the SRO program. And I think we have a, a lot of special guests here for that.
We do, Madam Chair, and if we could, I think I'm gonna invite Sheriff Lumpkin. Thanks for being here. He'll be first at the podium to sort of give us, um, a little flavor of what we might, uh, learn tonight. But we also have Deputy Connors here. She's the SRO from Hamilton Homes. And we want to talk a little bit about, um, the SRO program for the coming year, and the addition of, um, a new member of the SRO team potentially that we'll talk a little bit about as well. So Sheriff Lumpkin, welcome. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, uh, Madam Board, Madam Chair and other board members for, uh, well, ha- having us here tonight. Um, I'm super excited. Um, we have a new deputy that has started with us. That's a lateral from Tappahannock. Um, she will be, that'll be Deputy Ashley. Um, she will be the Cool Springs SRO. Um, she comes to us as a lateral, so she already has law enforcement experience of, um, roughly eight years. Um, so we're super excited about that. That'll fill all of our SRO positions for all of the schools. Um, to move forward here for the, this upcoming year. Um, along with the SRO program, um, we've added in addition, um, we, uh, received a DCJS grant for a therapy service dog, um, which Deputy Connors, uh, Hamilton Homes will have that with her. And that comes from the Hero Canine Program, which we've invited them to come tonight so that they can present, um, a couple of their dogs that they have for their service dogs and answer any questions that the board has in regards to how it's used in the school. Um, we have, um, Elizabeth here. She's an assistant principal at Spotsy. Um, she has Stephen Currie, who's the young lab. And then we have Denique, which has the Malawah. Um, she's the head person for the Hero Canine. Um, so we're super excited to have them speak with y'all. I know it's been, uh, trying to make sure we had the schools filled, so now that we have the schools filled, I'm super excited. And like I said, I'm excited to put this program into play. And also me and, uh, Dr. Wagner, I've, I've announced at a couple of board meetings ago that I had started a nonprofit at the sheriff's office to start a new school built. So that is in the works now. I pick up my paperwork from the lawyer on Thursday, and as me and Dr. Wagner have conversed back and forth, that'll start moving forward as far as to, uh, hopefully can build a new school soon. Um, and I guess I'll go ahead and allow, um, Denique, I'll bring her and let her answer some of y'all's questions and probably show you some of the things that their dogs can do.
It'd be helpful, because we have folks that are home that are listening.
My name is Denique Massanil. I'm the Executive Director at the Hero Academy. Thank you for allowing us to answer questions. I didn't prepare a real presentation because it needs, uh, the PowerPoint, um, in the pudding. My background is in service dogs. That's originally where we started in, saw a more facility and wellness program dogs as we saw the mental health crisis of course kind of changing. So post-COVID, uh, we started the Hero Academy. We were originally another program. And we very much specialize in what's called facility or crisis response canines. Those are dogs that are used for animal assisted interventions within school systems, but also after larger incidents. Um, so we go through meticulous proofing and certification process with third-party agencies. United States Police Canine Association, which is where the shop sheriff's office will do their therapy dog testing. A lot of this is just gonna be to offer liability. You will have parents that are gonna wanna know what level of training the dog's gone through, if the dogs are safe to be around children, what, uh, level of exposure they've had. Those are, those are all things we're gonna be able to answer for you. I brought Mrs. Garland with us. She's an assistant principal and has been working Phoenix as well as the dog that's going to be placed in the county within her school system. So she can answer a lot of actual educator perspective questions for you. Um, so from that aspect, I don't really wanna bore you with a lot of details and would rather answer target-specific questions you may have regarding a placement of a wellness dog within your school system.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Garland, and I am now an assistant principal in Spotsylvania County at Livingston Elementary, which is out by Lake Nana. Um, I taught in my way before this year, something, um, and had a class of a year ago to be an administrator. Um, I started offering with, um, the other organization that we were with, um, post-COVID, kind of right at the COVID, um, when one of my fellow teachers had a, um, foster puppy. He was a virtual teacher. So he came into our building, um, and he had forty. I still remember forty. And from that moment on, as a teacher, I got involved. Um, I had had probably about forty-five of the Hero Academy dogs come through my house and be in the school with me. Um, there really are no other words. Like Denique said, the proof is in the pudding. Um, I was showing Deputy, uh, Connors earlier, some photos that I have on my phone from past years of students sitting with the dogs when they are escalated, when they're not escalated, uh, reading nights, literacy nights, STEM nights, just the daily. I had, uh, the last year I taught, I had a first grader, I had about five students that would come down and check in with me, and the dogs that I had in the morning. They would set a timer, they would join my morning eating, love on the dogs, set their day up for success, and head back to class. Um, I've used Phoenix. Phoenix has been with me as a foster. She is now my personal service dog. But she is, uh, triple certified actually. Um, maybe even she got a board certification this past weekend or week. Um, so I have other dogs. I have, uh, two or three dogs at a time. It's a little more difficult as an assistant principal, but my teachers are more than willing to take Phoenix to their rooms for part of the day and/or use Phoenix as a reward or just have her in the classroom. Um, we've had staff members this past year who were going through, uh, many levels of personal difficulties with family things at home. They would just simply come into my office. I have an open door policy. Can I love on Phoenix or whoever you have for a few minutes? Yes, here, take the leash. Um, best of all, or best off, it's exactly what the teachers have needed. And I get so many comments all the time that just are, I'm so glad you, you do this. Um, and being able to give back to other school systems and/or the veterans that we donate to, it brings to me every, every time I think about it. So, um, as far as questions, like Denique said, I'm happy to answer any questions or concerns that you have. Um, and Phoenix, in fact, was at our school board today. I did some SBR training today. And many of the secretaries came and took her from me and took her around to all the staff members. And in fact, I'm going to drop Phoenix off there tomorrow to spend the day with the school, just the school board office people and personnel, because as you all know, this is an extremely busy time and a very stressful one for anybody that works in public education. So I'll be happy to answer any and all questions that you all have.
So I don't really have any. I think one of my concerns, which I feel like y'all have addressed, is the liability, um, of the dogs being in the school around kids or, you know, what if a child has allergies or something like that?
Um, I can answer that a little bit. I actually, my last year teaching, um, open house came and, you know, twenty-nine children walked into my room and then I say, well, um, they go on and leave. My principal called me down and said, you know, Mrs. Garland, I'm gonna move this child out of your room. Not because the parents have an issue with you. They were excited about you to be their teacher, but their daughter actually does severe, and this was, you know, more of a, uh, I'm gonna have an anaphylaxis, well, not anaphylaxis, but she would need to be out of school due to the allergy. So we simply had her switch classes, and any time we did a rotation with our team, we always had an alternate activity. I'm actually allergic to dogs. Um, and I monitor it with allergy medicine and allergy shots. Um, so I think there is a way for, um, you, for the school, this school to manage if, if children are, I have children at my current school that remind me that they are allergic. I had a young girl that I worked with this year who really behaviorally needed some help. And she responded extremely well to Phoenix. Um, and, um, she could just put on gloves. And or, and of course, communication with, with her, her parents and her guardians was key. And we came up with that plan. Um, and we made sure she washed her hands, she never touched her face. It was monitored. Um, I do find, my school is about five hundred students right now. My previous school where I was was close to eight hundred and fifty. Students will advocate for themselves and parents will as well. And I think as long as the school is open to that communication, which I know they will be, that there are ways to navigate that, and students are going to. And sometimes you get the student that says, I'm allergic to the dog, but they're really not. Um, so I think that there are ways to, you know, work around that.
Okay. And then what do you, uh, I'm sorry?
I was gonna actually add to that.
Yeah.
In addition to encountering allergies, you may also find cultural barriers, a history of trauma, people that have had incidents either within their family of dog attacks. Um, they're from a culture that doesn't, isn't familiar with dogs being indoors. Um, so there's, A, a lot of things we actually teach the handler, but also the dogs are trained to, first of all, you're supposed to maintain control of the leash. And the dog shouldn't just be introducing themselves so that you can create somewhat of a barrier so people can self-advocate if there's a severe fear. Most of the time, we've done empty chair rotation when there was an incident where a student, um, passed away in Spotsylvania. And we had students in the class that were rather uncomfortable, and they just asked like, we love that this is happening. Our friends in class need this, but can we, and they just went to another room. So we did not encounter a lot of conflict or, or negative conflict. Um, and we try and empower the, the officer handling the dog with as much information on also what to look for when somebody's uncomfortable. Um, same with refugee families. We're closer to Quantico sometimes. A lot of families from Afghanistan are quite frankly deathly afraid, especially of my dog. So I just have to be culturally aware that there is, um, certain cultures that are not going to be comfortable with this as a therapy dog engagement at all. So I have to step away or not volunteer for that role either. So that'll be something the leadership also needs to communicate in a letter, that if there's parents that have questions, are concerned, have any kind of history of traumatic incidents with dogs, um, as well as allergies of any kind or other autoimmune diseases that maybe everybody should be aware of. And then usually everybody kind of feels heard and had a voice in the interaction and something can be set up that's successful for everybody involved.
Thank you.
And Denique answered it very well. And in my, you know, five years of doing this, I did have and do have students that are afraid. And I, I just go around, yeah. Um, and then we have some students. One of my favorite stories is a student that was in one of our pre-K programs at Montpel School. Non-legal student, the entire year, um, was rolling around with their teacher in a wagon over the edge. Her first words were dog and knows as, and I'm gonna get teary-eyed, but as they touched Phoenix. Um, but it, it was that cultural awareness. And as a handler and as an educator, I made sure that I knew who had that fear. And, um, you will actually see students that do have that fear because they've never been around it come out of their ship as, but it's never forced on anybody. There is always a way around it. And we are talking handlers.
Do you all have any questions?
Do you, do you have sample communication that the school division or the school could send to families that you could share with, with us if we shared contact information?
We have one for Spotsy, and then I have several, um, community resource dogs, like these place in Pennsylvania school systems. So I can also get additional examples. We have another assistant principal we're actually, um, placing a dog with. So between the, um, actual paperwork that you would wanna see on how you have it structured for your agency and how the interaction with the school board, as well as anything else, we can provide sample paperwork so that you don't have to reinvent the wheel.
And if you could just maybe share those with Deputy Connors or the sheriff, then they can get those to me.
Absolutely.
We can, we can, we can get those distributed. I was gonna share with our board that probably the proposal here is slightly different because Deputy Connors isn't an administrator at the school. Um, so she's, she's probably a little bit more mobile, you know, and, and, um, and that may be our benefit. Have ideas. If you'd like to come and share, if you've got ideas on, on, on way. You guys, I was also gonna say, the first time I've heard wellness, which I think is super cute. Um, you know, I've only been in therapy at service, but I, I think that that's a, a really appropriate term for a role that, that a dog could play at a school, not just for the students, but also for, uh, for the adults. One of the things Deputy Connors, that I know we do all the time, is creating your office where the dog is, and time is the greatest necessary. But maybe just share, um, with the board, how you envision this relationship evolving?
Absolutely. So thank you very much. I'm Deputy Connors, uh, school resource officer here at Hamilton Homes. Um, so the grant is actually an Office of Wellness grant. It was, I, I titled it "Paws for Heroes." So I want, I feel it's important to note, the dog may not always be at the school. Uh, it just will be with me a lot because I happen to be the school resource officer here and to travel to the other schools if the schools want that. Um, there'll be days, it, the sole purpose of the program as a grant is to help offset and the dogs as a wellness dog helps reduce stress that our first responder staffs, our dispatchers are in a very, in a small space of twelve hours a day and handling intense calls. The dogs go in there and help reduce stress there. If our, we have deputies that have had a tough call or a tough day or whatnot, and it can be over at our office there. Um, and it's fire department. So I wanted to note, it's not always, KIP won't always necessarily be with me. Um, sheriff would like to have KIP come visit with him some, and I know our dispatchers are. Um, but it's way, it's the way I envision using KIP is, I think it's, it's gonna be an amazing resource for our, our youth. Um, he will have a crate in, in the office to have downtime and first time. I think that's very, very important. Um, I have prior canine handling experience. I was a narcotics canine handler with the Department of Juvenile Justice before coming here, so I'm familiar and have been through intensive training, uh, working with canines. So that's one reason I'm very passionate about this, a completely different role, but so positive and engaging. Um, I don't plan to have KIP in the hallways during class change, just for the simple fact, it's three minutes. And all the kids might wanna see, or a lot of kids might wanna see KIP, and it's very important they get to their classes. So, um, I plan to work with the schools and what works best for them. Um, I would like to, to utilize KIP in a, in a way to help our, our youth who we know have high stress or having problems at home. I did some mentoring after school last year at Hamilton Homes. Um, I plan to continue to do that in even a bigger way since I'm here for the full year, starting this year. So, um, I really wanna work with the schools and what works best for the school. I definitely don't want KIP to be an interference in any way. Uh, only positive things, um, you know, KIP will be able to go with me in the halls between classes and when the, oh, I'm sorry, between classes are in session. Um, and, and also be able to be utilized with, I could see working with our school counselors as well if they have, um, students that's having a really difficult time, and likewise with their staff. So I'm really open to, you know, receiving. I'm getting ready to go through some, um, pretty intense training with KIP before, uh, school, um, and then he'll come on board with us. So I'm, I'm actually gonna go with Elizabeth to her school and see how she works with Phoenix at her school. So I've got a lot of, the legend is getting passed on to me. She's offered to come, um, help me here at the school with KIP and just really help integrate and, and be, uh, an amazing blessing and not a hindrance.
And KIP is, is a KIP.
KIP.
And that shared narcotics dog.
No, that is actually, I had Brittany. That was a Malinois. KIP is actually, looks a lot like Phoenix, a yellow lab, two years old.
We have selected that will be replaced with a Hummer.
Okay.
You said that the dogs can be triple or quad certified? Is there any indications in what the certification process is or what they're learning?
So, um, and it's not necessarily a certification. Um, Phoenix is an Alliance of Therapy dog. Um, it's a whole service dog. Um, it's a program, um, run through crisis response canines. So she is also a CRC dog, um, to wear, um, Andrea Herring and John Herring are two individuals um, that work with crisis response and situations, um, out of state or within state. Um, then first responders, um, may be responding to a crash that killed a small child. Um, CRC works with the first responders versus being a dog that works with the victims. Um, she just passed her, um, eight weeks temperament test as well. Um, so those are the, the areas that I have for certified. And it's training, I have one more thing. Training is constant with these dogs. The more Phoenix works, the better she is. Um, and at four years old, um, the days that I work for, I think the summer she misses the kids, and she's ready for the kids to come back. So training is constant. It's every day.
So for KIP, we are, and through the therapy temperament dog test, um, like ten, a couple days ago. So we've been pre-testing some of the things, and those are just extra certifications to basically put in his file from a liability standpoint, because it's a third-party testing the dog's actual interactions with humans as well as environmental. Um, we recommend USPCA certification because they are in law enforcement agency. They have a therapy dog category, which is somewhat extensive as well. So that's another third-party that would then test the dog to be basically safe in an environment. If then it's chosen to go through Alliance of Therapy Dog Testing or another one, and then the agency would go through their actual liability insurance, give all of those certifications, because they usually have to certify any of their, or insure any of their dogs for liability as a department. Um, so all of these are just little checkmarks because there is no better business bureau or like federal certifying agency for any of this. It's the Wild West out there, so we can just try and do as much as we can to get this extended verification of, of level of training, quite frankly. That's, that's the best we can offer, and we've run, ta- taken the dog through the wringer as well as proved him in an actual school to make sure he can handle any of the different environments. And that's part of the grant program that they had to write out is how they envisioned utilizing the dog, which allows us then to properly select the right dog for the right job. Because again, not every dog would do well in a school environment versus a hospital environment um, versus a personal service dog. It's introvert versus extrovert and things like that. So we've, we've talked extensively to the agency to at least figure out what they wanna use him for, and that's why KIP is coming here, because he's more extroverted than some of the other ones, which was that extra layer we wanted for the school part.
Thank you.
And additionally, KIP spent about a month with me at the end of our school year, beginning of the summer, as part of Denise. So he's been around children and
Gotcha. Thank you.
Thanks. I have a couple of questions. Um, for one, we can, we can make sure that we run this by our insurance carrier, but I think since the canine is the property of the sheriff's office that it's covered under, under your life, it could be as well. But we'll make sure that we, that we communicate this with, um, with the school board's carrier. And, um, the second piece is just confirming, is the cross to the school division for this service a good policy? Yeah, I think it's, I, I think the benefits are out. Kid who, if this is part of the board system, could attend school just to be able to check in with the dog.
And for school resource officers, we've actually seen it very well used for de-escalation situations. So the, one of the school resource officers in Pennsylvania, she's used that repeatedly. Um, they have several children on this, um, difficulty even going to their classroom, and it was used as a reward system to get them from the vehicle or drop-off point to final destination. And it has made tremendous improvements. And overall, it's improved the relationship with the officer, because usually kids want to cross the other side of the road to the cop. And it's really band-aiding a lot of relationship with school resource officers. So it's really just changing the relationship they have with persons in uniform that are wearing a badge. And it's creating a safer, more, more environment where they have somebody to actually go to in certain situations. So it's changing the entire culture and school system.
And you're absolutely right about, uh, school attendance. Um, in fact, we used Phoenix and the other dogs, my principal and I did this year, because it's, is, is an area of concern. It's part of ours, he said, told, um, that Phoenix and the other dogs were part of that. Um, in fact, today, I was in, uh, Livingston is very rural, like this area, and so we have two or three arriving stores. Um, and I walked in there, ate lunch, and one of our students ran up to me. Um, Phoenix was in the car. It was running, but, uh, she ran up to me and said, I cannot wait for school because I can't wait to be next again. Um, so it, it does, it shows. Um, and again, like Denique said, to break that barrier, um, especially, I think, always being law enforcement from that negative aspect, of changing that mindset over to, now I have, yeah, do I have a resource that's a positive interaction?
Well, I hope we keep it in schools more than a year off after. There you go.
Works for me.
I did have one last question. So you mentioned that y'all utilize them in de-escalation, um, scenarios. So that was gonna be one of my things, like how would, would y'all as trainers handle maybe if a kid is like a little too lovey? Or if one's kind of like having a tantrum, you know, to protect the child and the dog?
I mean, I think it's a, it's a case-by-case basis.
I mean, I think it's a case-by-case basis, and I think Deputy Connors will learn the students. There are times, obviously, as an assistant principal, that I am responding to very high escalations where taking a dog is not the right idea, because just such a situation. So I think Deputy Connors having a crate, I have a crate in my office, and being able to leave the dog in certain situations, and then once that child has regulated somewhat, Deputy Connors will learn. And she can see it modeled with me as well. Will learn when to have the dog engage and when not to have the dog engage. Obviously, if the student is injuring themselves or others, we don't want to put the dog there. And then also there's the fine balance between students acting out to get to the dog. And that is taught, you know, and I'm sure that this middle school and the administration and the teachers here and the counselor, if there's a behavior interventionist, et cetera, will be able to, you know, have some guidelines for Deputy Connors. I think the other situation you asked about was how do we have the students not get too touchy-feely. My elementary school students, we do a hallway hug. So when any of the dogs are in vest, it says not pet. And so even if our vest say, please ask to pet me, they are taught, and it's a school culture and a school climate, that they're not going to pet. And then when we do teach them at the rate that we do have guidelines that Denise and Julie, our head trainer, have taught us, we start from the head down. Students at my school never get the treats or the kibble, and that's a choice of mine. So all of those things are taught. And then monitor, like Denise started, I always have control of this leash. And so at any point, I'm reading the dog as well. And Phoenix and I are extremely bonded. Any of the dogs that come and spend time with me, they bond very quickly. And so I'm able to, you know, read the dog just like a human to know when is too much, too much, and is it not enough. And I'm also, because the question was asked earlier, I'm reading the child as well. And I think middle schoolers will show those same signs as well if I'm feeling too crowded or I want more, but I'm afraid to ask. Does that answer the question? I think it's very much, I wish there were students here right now so that you all could see it in action. We, Phoenix knows on deep pressure therapy, Kip is being taught deep pressure therapy as well, which is when the student is sitting down, the dog will go and lay on them. But again, it has to be the right time, and I think that comes from the education side of things and then from the law enforcement side of things as well.
Thank you.
And then we set boundaries in communicating with the leadership within a classroom and within each schoolhouse on how interactions should be controlled from where you handle the dog, meaning what we have the responsibility of teaching the handler, but also whoever's in charge of that classroom or that student needs to communicate properly. So it needs to be a diamond method where there's one person actually handling the intervention, the handler with the canine, and the person actually receiving the intervention, so that the handler can only focus on the dog. So if she's by herself with the dog trying to handle a child that is escalating, it's going to eventually turn into an unsafe situation. So mainly, it's really teaching the handler that there's a certain level of responsibility because the dogs don't speak English and they have teeth. So controlling children, not all rushing her at the same time, communicating what's going on, so she knows what signs to look for. And ultimately, yes, it is her responsibility to read the dog and hence to train with the dog, so she knows the dog's starting to feel uncomfortable, or the dog doesn't do well with kids that scream at a certain pitch, running around a lot, like it should be very stimulating. So it is absolutely situations that have to be controlled. It's tremendous responsibility. So leaders of the school and leaders from agency must communicate very well for there to be success, to be honest.
Thank you.
Well, we're excited for this partnership to begin. I'm sure we'll be back in the fall with an update to the board, and so they get a chance to meet Kip too. I was going to say to our guests, the confidence that you speak with today and with the experience that you have and your command of this program and the way that you articulate, it really is reassuring. You know, it's one thing to think about this and wonder what it's going to be like, but it's another thing to hear from folks that do this each day with confidence and with composure. And I just really appreciate you taking time out of your schedules to travel to us and share your expertise.
Thank you very much. I'm excited to work with Deputy Connors and have her come up to my school and see it in action and then work with her and Kip as well.
So I had to place a dog in this county, so we're honored to be a part of this.
Yeah, I'm sure there will be interest in more than one dog.
Well, we're right over in Caroline, so you don't want to find that.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
All right. That was great. That was great. I love the puppies. Okay, so now moving right along, we are moving to item number seven, our citizens' comment period. And I see no citizens have signed up for speed or that even audience wanted to speak. Saying no progress, we'll move right on to item number eight. And item number eight, that's all.
Madam Chair, item 8.1 is the second read for the new and revised policies we brought to you last month for a first read, and they have been posted on the website for well over a month or so. And if any board members have questions about them, we're happy to answer them. But otherwise, we'd love to entertain a motion so that now that we're after July 1st, and some of these are based in new legislation, we'd like to get these incorporated into our policy manual. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Did anyone have any questions about any of the policies that we reviewed? No questions, no comments, suggestions? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Move to progress, second all, if they could say aye. Oh, signal. And these are now our new policy updates.
Thank you. This is a big one. Usually the big ones come around mid-year like this. We'll have some additional policy updates in the next month or two, but certainly not this many. So thank you very much.
Now, we move on to item number eight-two.
Eight-two, Madam Chair, is the strategic plan update. If you remember from our June meeting, I had asked to postpone this item for tonight. Just wanted to share with the board a brief update on strategic goal five, and give you an idea of what our indicators of progress might be and a few examples of our progress toward that goal. This will also complete our review of the strategic plan this year. And now that it's after July 1st, we get to start this process all over again and continue to add some of the great things that we're doing in the division to help the school board realize its strategic goals. But with that, we're going to go ahead, if it's okay with you, I'm going to go ahead and get started. I'm going to try to limit this time if I can. This has been posted out there as well for about a week, and so I'll ask our handlers over here who will work on the PowerPoint to actually move us through. But just a very quick reminder, we started this process almost a year ago, back in September. We made our way through four goals, and tonight we're going to quickly run through goal number five. So goal number five, just so that our public knows, is to pursue effective, efficient, and equitable use of division resources, operations, and processes to support the mission, vision, core values, and strategic goals. Essentially, what this goal means is we're going to do everything we can to operate the school division as efficiently and as effectively as possible. So the measurable outcomes that we've identified, the first, I think I mentioned this to the board at our retreat, but I'm going to work to commission a budget advisory group for this year's budget cycle. I'd like to be able to do this every year, to have a representative group that might include a school board member, a member of the board of supervisors, a member of the finance team from the school division and from the county, and then some citizen and staff representation, just so that we can make sure that we have a representative group that understands and is able to speak to our budget development process. And each of these, as you can see, is aligned to an objective and to a strategy. Also, by this fall, hopefully by September, both the mayor and the county administrator, and so this will be October, but at least we'll get the ball rolling, is have a joint chair planning meeting where we would have chair and vice chair of the supervisors, chair and vice chair of the school board. We've done a couple of these in the past. Members of the finance team, and we would just get together and talk about some of our short and long-term goals to approach the budget. By December 2025, we would like to, and actually by legislation, have to conduct an accessibility assessment of all school facilities. So this is new legislation as of July 1st, and we have to report the results of our accessibility assessment to the general assembly. And so we'll do that, and we'll do that by December. And when Mr. Starek gets back in town, we'll talk a little bit more about this. But it's really just, in a nutshell, the school division has an obligation to explore the extent to which any of its facilities might present barriers to persons with disabilities, and that's any kind of disability.
So once we identify this, is there, you have to have a faction in place?
So there's not a lot of guidance on this. The VDOE doesn't have any role to play. They just have to administer the legislation. But we do have to have an acknowledgement of the barrier and potentially a plan to address, but it doesn't necessarily have to be immediate, as I'm understanding. And I think the legislature recognizes that if there are barriers, some of them could be costly and might be, you know, might be a budgetary impact for the school division. But to start with, it's the acknowledgement and then the intent is to develop a plan to address those barriers at some point in the future. I don't have a timeline on that, but it's a fair question. Because that was one of our questions too, is if we identify a list of 100 things, but we obligated to do those right away. And there's not really a short, quick answer on that. But first is acknowledgement, and next might come a plan to address. Any other questions on that one? And then we want to share a little bit of progress with you. I'm just trying to do this pretty quickly. So a few things that our board is already aware of, but we'd like the public to be aware. We've taken advantage of several grant opportunities in the past school year. And even in the current school year coming up, one of the grant opportunities was for school security officers, so we're really pleased about that. We have two academic grants that were involved in students with disabilities, and English learner literacy network grants. These involve staff from Quinton and from Hamilton Homes that are participating in these and are likely going to continue their participation in the coming year. The school division does receive some nominal resources to help support the work of this grant, but we're pleased that we were selected for those. Another example is expanding the support for middle school for VLA. This is, if you remember that Virginia Literacy Act was in K through three last year, and this year it extends to four through eight. And then we also are continuing with our diagnostic tool with IRI. And then another example here of work that we've already done in the past, and it's related to efficiency and effectiveness. And our board knew that we partnered with VDOE to conduct a facility assessment, and we now have the results of that assessment. And we're happy to, you know, to post that if the board wishes. But we really did this in anticipation of community growth that's expected over the next two to 10 years. I think we're still waiting to figure out what the long-term implications there are. But just in short, for our community to know is each of our schools does have some capacity to accept or accommodate their students. But I do think that they're not going to be able to accommodate, let's say, a thousand more students. And so if there are several thousand homes that are planned for the community over the next five to 10 years, we're going to really have to partner with the county and think about what might be next. But in the short term, I think we'll be able to have enough seats for all of the kids that we're expecting in the fall. But I don't know if we'd be able to say the same thing five years from now. So we've already done that facility study. We know that we have some capacity now that is reasonable and usable capacity. And then lastly, just on that one, and I'll stop there and see if there are any questions. We are replacing the division's phone system this summer. Many thanks to Mr. Gruffy and Mr. Chapman and Mr. McBride, and spearhead that. We want to make sure that every phone in the school division is able to be identified if that phone needs to call emergency services. So it's really a 10-point contact. We're able to do that with last year's phones, so we've already still covered that call. And that will be completed probably by the end of July, so we'll have all new division-wide telephones. So we're excited about that. That's, I think, is, again, aligns with effectiveness and efficiency.
And it ties into the sheriff's system.
Sorry?
And it ties into the sheriff's system for identification.
Mr. Identification. Yeah, so the sheriff's office will be able to identify the exact telephone. Yes. And you may hear a bit more about that when Mr. Gruffy presents a little later. All falls there. This information is posted on board docs, and we also have this posted on the division's website under strategic plan. So if anybody would like to take a closer look, we certainly invite that. And then we can't wait to start this process over again in the fall and repeat. In the coming year, we'll be doing this as asked you. So happy to answer any questions if you have them.
I think we've had a very successful year. We've accomplished a lot of the goals that we set up in our strategies.
I think so too. Thank you. Thanks for your support.
Any questions, comments? All righty, we can move right along.
Okay, very good. Thank you. I wanted to share with the board and with our community an update on the turf project at King William High School and Hamilton Homes Middle School. Recognize that there's been some community chatter out there, and I think there might be some folks that are super supportive of this project and others maybe less so. We wanted to take a quick minute or two just to share with you some facts about the process. And we don't necessarily have to show any photographs. They're available on our website as well. We have this front center. But let's go ahead to our first slide and do it again. And our project is almost underway. If you're driven by the high school, hopefully you've seen the field and the progress that's been made. It looks really, really good. But some basic facts is, well, we'll start with, in 2008, there was some renovations that were done to all of our high school facilities, and it was the cost of $3.5 million. That included the construction of the stadium. In 2014, the school board had issued an RFP for consideration of an athletic field maintenance contract. I'm not quite sure whether that was ever awarded or if we kept that work in-house, but I think there was some acknowledgement back then, that field care was a big job. Fast forward to 2021, there was some initial staff discussion about the possibility of an artificial turf field. And so that was about four years ago or so. And it wasn't until this past year that we shared with the board an opportunity to, one, expand sports at the high school, but also provide an opportunity for King William Raiders to use the stadium field as a way to help showcase that program and get more community participation in the Raiders program. And we knew then, when we had made these proposals, that it was going to put some stress on a natural turf field. So in March of '22, this is before I arrived, but the Board of Supervisors approved a general purpose school bond that ended up being just about $7 million or so for the purpose of financing multiple projects. Some were new, some were deferred maintenance. But the little bulleted list there is some of what that school bond covered. And I know that Mr. Stone had shared with you last year, you know, the progress made on many of these projects. And anybody that drives into our schools now is driving on new pavement. You know, all of our parking areas have been milled and repaved and seagull, just one example. New track is another example. We had some soffit work at Quinton Dunn, and of course, there's new HVAC on all of our facilities. So we are very appreciative of the Board of Supervisors for allowing us the use of the bond funds. And if we'll advance the slide, I'll. I'll share a little bit of the table. But those capital projects from that bond, many of which were completed under budget. And so that left a residual amount that might be available for further capital investment. And so if you take that available funding and you pair that with what we had shared was unexpected road to athletics and stress on that stadium field, we had an opportunity to revisit, you know, the early exploration from 2021 and consider an artificial turf field, which is what we did. The point being that there might be some information out there that we're using current tax dollars for that project, and that's just not accurate. We're actually using residual bond funds from 2022, and we're also using additional funds from our capital reserves, which is money that's available to the school division already for capital projects. So there are, none of the turf project is related to the county's recent real estate tax increase. They're totally unrelated. So I said in the first bullet, no new tax dollars, and the bond funds can be used only for capital items. The money that we're using to support a turf project and the refurbishment of the Hamilton Homes field cannot be used for compensation or benefits or new staff or textbooks or capital, anything else. So it's only for those facility or capital projects. And the turf project certainly qualifies for that. And that was approved by the Board of Supervisors in October of last year. And just a quick note, maybe one or two things from this slide. Split levy is a new funding situation for our school division. And part of the split levy agreement includes a provision that annual unspent appropriations from the school division are directed to a reserve account for capital projects. We still have to request that money from the board, from you. And then this board has to request appropriation from the county. But the point being that it behooves the school division to operate efficiently so that if there are unspent funds, we have them available for deferred maintenance and capital projects. So in a sense, we kind of fund our own capital. But if there are larger items, like a new stadium or a new auditorium, there's a lot of communication about an auditorium, that's not a million dollar project. That's a multi-million dollar project. Or a new school, that kind of decision-making would require more than likely another bond, another general obligation bond. And I don't believe our county is in the position yet for that in terms of its debt structure. There's a right time for that, and I think now is probably not the right time. But this is related to what I mentioned a moment ago about the strategic plan. I don't think we can wait 20 years to make a decision about a new facility. Community growth continues at this point. So we're probably getting to a sweet spot in the next few years where county and schools have to come together to figure out what's next. That's an exciting time for a community, lots of opportunity. And we're gonna, at least as long as I'm here, we're gonna do our very best to be as open and transparent and efficient as possible to make sure that we are using citizen funds. So let me pause there and see if there are any questions. And I always have to answer questions either from you or from the community that might happen. And we're really looking forward to the first few athletic events when the field opens later this fall. It's really taking shape.
I think we're good. I still believe that this is a good opportunity for us, and it's a good thing that it'll have many opportunities for students. But I also realize, thank you for the picture today, we're not the only school that's been doing this. So others seem to need this item also. We got a picture today from Nucan, where Nucan is also doing a turf.
Right.
It's not too far down the road.
And like, it's turf. Yeah. I mean, it's, I know it's the right decision, and it's going to be good for our kids. I know that our athletes are going to be excited about it. And that will all look on first Friday night at a home game. I think it's going to light the place up, and we're excited about that. Thank you for taking a minute to explain that. Okay, thank you. And again, this presentation is posted in Board Docs, and it's available for the public to see.
All right. And no further questions. It will move right along to 8.4.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I gave each of you a printed copy of some information that I just wanted very briefly to share, some school budget clarification if I could, in case of how it's meant to be said. Kevin, if you would mind going to the second slide, that would be helpful. I wanted to address, take a moment to address some information and misinformation that might be circulating online, and just try to offer some clarification to the public about some graphics that they may see or some figures that they may see. But this is one that I found online that talks about the school division's ever-in saying budget. And I want to bring some clarification to what this graphic does and does not communicate well. If you go to the next slide, I do want to share that there are a couple accurate pieces of information on this. The first one was that the initial proposal for the school board's budget was 45.969. And you may remember that I brought that to you in February as an initial proposal. We were asked to come off it a little bit by the county administrator, and eventually, the school board eventually adopted a $45.5 million total. And I think that's where, that's where the clarity, or the accuracy of a graphic like this is misconstrued. And that is the far right column that you would see on this slide, and that, you know, the public can see if they're watching from home. That represents all total funds that the school division has available to it. Not necessarily for one year, but that represents a total. So if you go to the next slide. So what you see on this slide is the blue bars between FY '20 and FY '23. You know, they're sort of all in the same place. And then you have FY '24 through '26. And it does look like that there's been an explosion of expense. But that's misleading because it's not accurate. And the point that we want to make is that FY '24 through '26 are total budget amounts, which include all funding sources, where the blue bars only include operating budget. And so if we go to the next slide, we'll clarify that a little bit more. So the 45.59 amount in the far right column actually has almost $10 million more dollars in it than is typically reported, because that's outside of the operating budget. And you may remember this, we moved that information in our Board of Supervisors document. A mutual fund that can only be used for nutrition. We have a capital fund that can only be used for capital. That's what the term restricted is there. We have an insurance fund that is from, went from self-insurance to the local choice, TLC. And we have to maintain the balance in that account for the bond, because you've got posts that may have had medical procedures under insurance. And we have to be able to cover that one off at the bottom. We have the regional alternative program. It has over $1 million. And again, that's not accessible to the school division for our operations, the regional program. We have adult education, about $1.5 million. Again, that's specific to adult education. It's not available to the school division. So, excuse me, so the clarity that I'd like to provide is it's really apples and oranges on the same graph. If you go to the next, we can clarify that a little bit. And actually, Mr. Chapman, you can go one more while I did everybody. So what I want to share is that this graph where without the context, it does look like that in FY '24, the school division just decided to, and, you know, $20 million, $20 million, $15 million or $20 million more in taxpayer dollars to now. And without that context, it might lead a viewer to think that that's what's happening. Actually, and again, to reiterate, FY '20 through FY '23, the graph shows really only the operating budgets, where FY '24 through FY '26 show all funds. And so it's really apples and oranges. And I wanted to clarify that here. So if you go back on the slide, if you don't mind, I do want to say very quickly that it's really uncommon for operating budgets in any location, not just the school division, to increase from one year to the next because of cost increase, compensation increase, benefits increase, materials and supplies, transportation, fuel, maintenance, you know, if a chiller or boiler goes out, or if an HVAC unit goes out. You know, and those aren't low dollar expenses, but utilities go up. And I think, you know, all of us can expect the cost of electricity to increase even further as the power centers, you know, come online. And you're hearing lots of communities news from other communities about building these data centers that require a ton of power. So we're going to continue to see our utilities costs increase. And then, not only that, there are new decisions that might be necessary, or new initiatives. And as I share in this slide, some of which are mandated by legislation. So for instance, the Virginia Literacy Act, we have no choice but to implement that. But often, that implementation requirement comes without funding. You may have heard the term unfunded mandate. There's a whole list of them. And school divisions around Virginia, you know, have to execute that. So again, just because an operating budget increases from one year to the next doesn't mean that the school division is being irresponsible. And then finally, on this slide, I wanted to share that we had also.
Is there a reason why we weren't from this operational budget to total? Why did we do the increase? Why did we go four years, install blue? And why did we start doing that transparency?
Well, to be honest, we didn't do anything, because I didn't create the graph. So it's just, it's just obvious. Somebody, someone made a graph and put it out there that makes okay, the school division can see it, all this spending more money. But we could create red graphs for all of the blue graphs, too. We just have to add up all the total funds. And it just, they've just, it's been omitted here, and it's just run away. You know, without the context, it can be misleading. And so we've always reported the same way. I'm not quite sure what the source of these data are. But they're out there, and I've seen them, and I've read a couple of comments that people might think that the school division is spending irresponsibly. And then five years here, and you've approved the budget, you've seen it all the way through. And I think we're being pretty responsible, too. You know, are there things that we can do better and improve? Absolutely. And you've held me accountable for trying to make that happen. So I appreciate that. But we're going to do it effectively and efficiently, or at least as much so as we possibly can. So I wanted to share on this slide, on this, I believe, we may have one more slide after this. But the county's annual comprehensive financial reports are available online. I think I may have an example on the next slide. These are available for anybody in the public to review. I wanted to share that the county reports the total expenditures, that is, the government, the county's contribution for the schools, I've listed here in bold font. And sure enough, there has been an increase in the county's investment in the school division, for which we are very grateful for that. Again, for some of the reasons that I shared, the operating budgets often increase, even despite enrollment fluctuations. But those amounts, as you can see, those actual county investments are far less than the numbers that are reported on that graph. That graph, again, those blue bars, total operating budget, which may, which actually does incorporate the county's local transfer or its contribution. But again, without that context, that information can be misleading. Point being is that the county produces an annual comprehensive financial report each year. It's not available yet for FY '25. But when it is, you know, I can share that information with you as well. So we appreciate all of the investment that the county has made in the school. Again, sample page from the ACMR. This was from the year ending June 30, 2022. I circled the amount that I had in my slide just for transparency. And we'll post this in Board Docs as well for the public to see. And in this last link, please, on my behalf as a sole person for the school board, we want to reassure the public of our commitment to transparency, accountability, and fiscal responsibility. But we also do desire to push for what we believe are the decisions that will best help our students and staff. And the term that I like to use there is flourish. And, you know, I, sometimes, sometimes good isn't good enough. And I want to make sure that all of our students and staff can flourish. And always invite questions or comments from the school board or staff. Please, as you may, reach out to any board member or to me or to someone in finance if there are questions. But thanks for letting me spend a few minutes to address this clarification, and I hope that you find this helpful. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? No questions, and we're moving right along. And I believe that brings us to, I remember, non-curricular instruction item.
Hello. Good evening, board members. At our last board meeting, we gave our presentation for partnering with West Point Public Schools for our cosmetology program. And at the end of the meeting, we talked about our next steps would be to develop a draft MOU with West Point. And so what you have included within the board packet is a draft MOU. I'm sure that you all have had an opportunity, I'm sure that you all have had an opportunity to review it. So I didn't want to read through the whole thing. But in addressing some of the questions that came up the last time, I just wanted to highlight or kind of point out a few things. The first one, number three, includes the transportation. But of course, I'm sorry, I'll back up for one moment. For the '25-'26 academic year, the proposal is to enroll two West Point students to our cosmetology program. Of course, those students would be beginning with cosmetology one. And then number three, because this was a concern, just to make sure that it was outlined in the MOU with transportation, West Point would be responsible for providing transportation to their students. And that would be at no cost to King William County Public Schools. If there were any extracurricular activities, field trips, et cetera, associated with the cosmetology program, then West Point would be responsible for transporting to those locations as well. And of course, with number four, we would follow all of the requirements as outlined by the Virginia Department of Professional and Occupational Regulations. And so that's simply outlined there. The academic calendar, I think this is an important component as well, so that the West Point students understand that students in that program would follow the King William calendar. And so for if there's a reason that King William is closed due to inclement weather or any unforeseen circumstance, then the West Point students would know that we would not have program on that day. I think that's important, because even now, you all are probably aware, if there is a school closure, sometimes with Nucan and Bridging, and it doesn't impact us, or Governor's School, then we are canceled. But we do have to work that out. Again, the Governor's School starts before we Again, the governor's school starts before we open, and so we are responsible for transporting those students. And so that's the reason why I just wanted to point out the academic calendar, because sometimes, while it doesn't happen very often, there may be times where the calendars align completely. Number six is tuition. At the time of our presentation on last month, the tuition had not been determined, but both Dr. Wagner, as well as Dr. Fraser, superintendent for West Point, they had had an opportunity to discuss, and the tuition amount for each student is listed there at 3,500, the contractual period. The contract or the MOU goes per year. We will review the contract annually, and then if there are any revisions, both parties will review the agreement less than, not less than 30 days prior to its expiration to determine if there are any renewal, terminations, or revisions, or of whatever the times that are listed within the agreement. And then number eight does include termination. And so this covers the point, there was a, another concern for that we turned loud and clear at the last meeting as well. If our program grows, and there is a need that we need, the slots that have been designated for West Point, we, the opportunity does exist for us to terminate the contract to ensure that we always have room for our two local students. And so I just wanted to, if there are any questions, anything else that we need to consider, I would like to hear this comments from the board, and we can definitely revise the provisions to the draft, and then present it if necessary.
I mean, I think for the field trip piece, I would hate for them to have to pay a bus driver, like if we're going to Fort Palm for a field trip, for them to have to take a completely separate bus for two kids. Like, could we not just work something out where if we're going this way, we pick them up, and then if we're going that way, they just drop them off at the school, and then they can pick them up from the school?
And we actually have that in the MOU. It doesn't necessarily spell out every specific circumstance, but it says, West Point students may join King William students on our transportation for such activities within the school day. But if there's a pickup on the way, if there's a pickup, I think we. And then we also put in there, I think this was a question that came up last month, the West Point students, if, if, if the two want to continue, we're going to have two seats for them.
Yeah, so that.
So hopefully we addressed the questions that came up last month. I don't believe we presented this yet to our friends at West Point.
Not yet.
So we wanted to make sure we had your blessing on this, and then we'll, we'll send it over to them to take a look at.
Okay. We're just talking.
Do we have other questions about this?
I don't. Motion to approve that.
Sorry, I think the last piece that I was looking for was the breakdown of the 3,500. Was one of my requests at the last meeting.
Well, I'm not quite sure what that is just yet. And, and I don't think for any of our tuition programs, we have a breakdown. Dr. Fraser and I landed on that because, at least for the first year, because we're growing the program. Let me see if I can give a better example. So for students that go to Bridging, or students that go to Chesapeake Bay, the tuition is higher, but there are different costs associated with, with those programs. In some cases, like the students at Chesapeake Bay, it's dual enrollment. So here, you know, the students are essentially in a double-blocked class, but we feel at that time that it involved as much of a, of a, sort of a program commitment as governor's school or the technical center just yet, because it's really just one class. It's not, it's, it's not two classes, per se. And, and so this is, this is again, for the first year. So we landed on an amount that was more than half of the bridging and the, and the governor's school amount, but also trying to, what I understood, West was already paying in tuition for the external program. So we just tried to, tried to mirror that. I don't think there's going to be any cost to us whatsoever. So I, I, we can, as we move through the year, it might be helpful for all of us to try to figure out what are the actual costs of the program, so that we can articulate it. And, and if that number needs to be adjusted, then that's what we'll propose.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion on the floor? Motion to approve, it's listed here.
Second.
The board of property second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no. And we have a MOU report, let's present it to Dr. Fraser.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Bass.
Now, we're at the midsummer update.
Ms. Davis is on, and I think we've got some other folks that are going to share a quick update with the board.
Yes, I'm going to kick us off with King William High School. Ms. Ward is unable to be here tonight, so she asked if we could provide her update for her, and she put together a presentation for the board just to share what they're doing at King William, and they have some exciting things happening this summer. First and foremost, she started with some summer celebrations. The boys baseball, girls softball, girls soccer and track team, all in state or going to state. The baseball and softball team both finished as the Division Two runner-up for the state title in St. Louis. We're very proud of all our teams and their success and hard work that they've put out there. So we just want to take a moment to congratulate them on their success. If you come by King William High School, you will see there have been some slight building updates. They have new parents in the front and the counseling area. They've installed some, what they call, graphs around the school, just to increase that school spirit and add a little bit of flair to the building as you see. So it turned out really nicely, and Ms. Ward is very excited about, about that, and her students can see that this year. As we heard earlier, the church field is under Ray, and they are excited to host the first home football game on September 5th to mark their calendars. We hope to be there. And then Ms. Langford has done a fabulous job this summer of working with Mr. Hill and the custodial, custodial team to clean out and update the shop area, so it's ready for the new school year. She's partnering with some local businesses to assist in ensuring the shop space is up to date in order to prepare students to be CE-ready. When students do return, they'll see some newly designed areas to support electrical, welding, woodworking, and agricultural courses. There will even be a new greenhouse outside to, outside the shop to support the agriculture, horticulture, and plant science classes, which is, this is a pretty big project, and we're excited to see the progress in making that.
And I'll just add, if you haven't, if you, if you get a chance to swing by and see that shop space, it is an absolute transformation. Ms. Langford and Mr. Hill, so that's Ms. Langford in the picture on the right, and I think she's using a concrete cleaner and then scrubbing the floor, and it, it is just unbelievable, the work that they've been able to accomplish this summer. And it's, it really has transformed that space. New shop bench tables and some shop cap entry are in there as well, and I think our students are going to have a whole new level of pride in that space.
And it's wonderful she's been able to partner with the local business that's giving support for that information. So we're very thankful for all the hard work Ms. Langford has put towards this. We've had some wonderful building updates continued. So Mr. Stone and his team has been working hard. They have some new bathroom partitions that have gone up, and the gym floor has been repainted and resurfaced. So we are excited to begin hosting those events back in the gym, and it looks really good. And so that's a huge thank you to Mr. Stone and his team. They've also been hard to build the classrooms from top to bottom. So this is a special shout-out to the King William High School custodial team for working very hard to get students ready to help the students back in August, which is going to be here before we know it, because it's been a short week. So we are very grateful for the hard work that they've put into getting our classrooms ready. So huge thanks to Mr. Really, Matt, and that, the custodial crew at King William High School. And then next, our admin council team, they have come together to build a master schedule this year. They looked at what students had requested and pulled what's called a conflict matrix to determine where each class would be placed in the schedule to accommodate the most number of students. They were able to incorporate common planning time among core content teachers, and they can collaborate with each plan using the data that's gathered from affirmative and formative assessment, which this is a pretty huge accomplishment to, to do at the high school level, to provide that common planning for the teachers. And she's excited to see where that will go, and we are excited to do that, the fruits of that labor as well. Both of our, the teams have participated in retreats and professional development about the new math textbook, iReady, Power School lesson plans, and AI usage. And the admin has been working to recruit and hire highly qualified applicants to fill the positions. Early this, in the summer, they have picked up the summer SOL Academy, providing opportunities for students who did not pass an SOL in math and history during this year. This week is for students who need to, SOL remediation and testing for history and English. They're working to achieve that SOL pass rate. And then content teachers have also meant to revise and update their curriculums and facilitate games throughout the summer. And then, just some quick upcoming events for the high school. Freshman orientation will be on August 14th. Open house is August 13th, from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. And we are excited to celebrate the 100th anniversary of King William High School, so there will be lots of celebrations happening throughout the school year. The first day at school is August 18th. Don't forget the first home football game is September 5th. Homecoming will be October 3rd, and then we're already thinking about graduation and marking calendars for that, which will take place on May 18th. Matt, if you would like to order your second year anniversary t-shirt, you may do so, that link is active, they are selling them. They will have long-sleeve shirts, crewnecks, shirts in either black and gold are available. So you just fill out the Google form, that is linked in the slide, in the invoice, and right here, so don't wait, order today.
Thank you.
Ms. Cannon is in the house. Thanks for being here.
In the house.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So I am Marcy Cannon, assistant principal here at Hailston Homes Middle School. And so over the summer, our team will come in, and they have put in together several teachers from being training in Wilson and our Wilson-Hillam literacy approaches. This will help set the foundation as we begin implementing our Virginia Literacy Act, which, you know, affects grades four through eight, like here in Hailston Homes, six through eight. We also have summers here this year, and so I will definitely be running very, I would say, very successful. So for our back at police, we'll be continuing to focus on maybe some of our students have a common understanding of what mastery of their content looks like, and they will also be working to create rigorous and solid assessments. Math teachers will have training in our new textbook, that is, a highly qualified instructional materials list. We will also be implementing a new bell schedule here. During, we will welcome back, we will be discussing with our staff the differences between implementation and remediation, how to utilize what we call our win period, which, for what I mean, so that'll occur every day. That'll be 25 minutes for a whole school, in lessons, introductions, remediation, extensions, and we will also be using that time for the plug, such as tills or SCA, or any other thing that we make up with the school year. We will also have examples for school-wide lessons, such as positive character traits. We will continue to recognize our students every month, and help to prepare students for implementation of our open gate web system, which we will have in operation within the first few weeks of school. So open house meeting, as you know, is August the 13th. Sixth grade this year will have an orientation, that'll be August 14th, and we're doing that in conjunction with the high schools, so that'll be from 8:00 noon. We will welcome our new vikings to come to get a special seat review of the data of a Hailston Homes middle school student. Students will run through their schedule, participate in community building activities, and get ready for the first day of school. Transportation and lunch will be provided in that day. Registration has been sent an email, and is required, so that our students can just be properly prepared for our day. We will also consider making out to families soon in newsletter, to get newsletter to get input on the upcoming school year. We will do information about our new bell schedule for our students and prepare for that also. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Yes, thank you. Well, I respect your work on the, on the flag of the list that we have continued with Cool Spring Primary. First and foremost, we want to thank our 12-month staff, and especially our custodians. I know we've had been a little bit short with some of our custodial staff, and so we have had some additional members that have been supporting us. But I want to do a big shout-out to Ms. Cornell, Ms. Renee, and Ms. Helen, who has come over and helped us. There's been a lot of collaboration between Cool Spring and Quinton, the team going over, knocked out a good, a good clique early on, and it's happening over at Cool Spring. So they've just done a great job, and we so appreciate how beautiful they have made whole schools. A little bit about our welcome back week for teachers. We're really excited to welcome our teachers back and, and welcome our new teachers into our, our staff's family. We are going to start with a welcome back question, which is, hi, tradition. And Mr. Horn and I have decided to do some things together still, because we've worked so hard over the last two years to really build that collaboration. So we're going to be very intentional about the things that we want to do together with our staff, and then also honor the fact that our two schools are separate schools and have separate school communities. So we're going to be really intentional about what we do together, but then also have lots of opportunities for us to do this as our individual schools. Little update on our summer meeting, we have met with all of our individual grade levels, and Mr. Horn will update you, we have second grade tomorrow, and that will be all of our grade levels that have met on our pacing in preparation for the new school year. In addition, we, I'm really cool. In addition, we have met with the counselors, so the leadership, the board administrators, worked with all centers, prepared both schools to get ready, and have worked with the counselors to really develop what things we're going to do this year, as we separate the administration into two separate leadership teams. And we have had a lot of good, rich discussions, again, about how we can be really intentional about our collaboration and where we can have some separation. Ms. Horn and I had the opportunity, and, and the assistant principals, to meet with our new PTA president at Cool Spring, who also has a child in, and he really wants to revitalize the Quinton PTA. So, you know, really excited about that, it was up and off the ground again, so please look for communication about that, coming to some third-grade parents, and then fourth and second grade parents, but that's a PTA, we're getting it up and running again at a Quinton. To kick off our new year, we are really excited about open house. We can't wait to have the three hours to hopefully get some more opportunities to have some interactions and not necessarily feel so quick. At our open house, we're going to share with parents a survey to get put in back so we can have a monthly family engagement or parent engagement opportunity. We're going to call that Eagle Engagement. And we hope to have our school counselor do it, but might be coffee with counselors one month. It might specifically talk about attendance another month with, with me and our principal. We're probably going to do one specific to behavior. So we're going to have some scheduled, but then we really want to use that input from the survey to hear what parents want to, to connect with us about throughout the year. So we're really excited to kick that off at open house. And then we're hopeful for a good, successful first day of school. We are, we're a little bit different than the last two years, some expectations stations. But we let kids come in, get to know their teacher in their classroom. And then we probably one went through expectations, usually two, and then we usually begin a year. This year, we're going to do expectation state, expectation assemblies for the first day. So they're going to come in, they're going to meet their teacher, they're going to meet their classmates. And each grade level is going to rotate through that expectation assembly. And we're going to reiterate it throughout the year, but we really want them to hear day one, what our expectations are for behavior and academic at our school. And then we're going to send follow-up communications to parents off of those talk rooms so they can help reinforce that and reiterate that at home. So we just have a great start to the year.
When is your open house?
On the 13th from 3:00. And every house at all schools is on the 13th from 3:00. And then we're going to have open house for employees on the, so on that day of 14th.
Y'all want to be hustling.
And that's me. I know that was kind of a lot, but excited.
No, I'm excited. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And Mr. Horn, let's finish here. Update on Cool Spring.
Mr. Horn, welcome. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
What a summer.
Right.
Um, I'm really excited to be here. I want to start off just thanking our custodians who would plead for me not to give them a public shout out, which is one of the reasons why I love them. But Jeremy, Jake, Seth, Sheila, and Mr. Garlic have done an awesome job. They come in and just work, and especially the, the two college kids, they've got their headphones in and it just pops a really, really shiny room. A couple of updates of things we have planned this summer. I have obviously in my new role, I, I know, I do know the staff, but I know the staff through the assistant principal lens. So with this new position, I've, I've invited the staff in for one-to-one meetings with me. I have some specific questions that I've given them that they have ahead of time that we, we have a pretty intentional conversation. And I want to hear them especially through the principal lens. Again, I've, I've known them for a while now, but now with this new position, I think this is important. And most meetings are on Monday, but some people are on vacay. So we've already had some meetings and it's been, it's been really good, positive conversation. So that's, that's special for Monday. Like Ms. Hook said, we have secondary coming in tomorrow morning. We'll be here through the beginning. We have our lead meeting. But they're just going to work through the pacing guide, get together. I think they're, they're on four hours. Write your lesson plan and just to, you know, get together and do all that so they're ready for day one. There's not a lot of planning in the summer. We have a meet and greet scheduled. This is going to be July 28th, and it's just an opportunity for the community to come out and meet me, meet Mrs. McCullough, our new roles. Again, they do know us, but not in these roles. So I think it's important that they see us in these roles. And it's not an open house. It's, you know, they're going to come in, the schedules. I'm going to send it a, a more of a formal introduction for Thursday. But it's just, we're going to interview ourselves. We have a presentation. We'll do that in the gym for about 20 minutes. And then the parents and the students will all go out to the playground. I've already talked to the weather people. It's not allowed to rain. It's not going to rain. Look, yeah. That's why it's not. It was going to be possible, but it'll be both Amanda and I. And we've also gotten with transportation and it can be a nice shiny bus there because hopefully it's going to be new students to Cool Spring, new students to school, you know, that. So I think the bus can be intimidating to them. So it's not going to be a school bus. It's just a big deal.
That's me.
Oh, me with you.
At the meet and greet, yeah. We have the second half that on the playground. We have a bus right there too, so that they can explore that.
That's a great idea. One of the main obstacles that they like now are the SpongeBob, but you have to make sure the eyeballs are gumballs.
We're doing all yellow on the playground.
So what are the parents who are unable to attend for whatever reason, are you posting it online to the website?
Yes, it's going to be posted. I'll, I'll do it through the social share and did it on Facebook. And it's on our marquee.
And what time is it again?
Nine, 10:00 a.m.
Popsicles at breakfast?
Popsicles with.
When a kid's favorite, popsicles for breakfast.
At popsicles. Okay, we had a meeting with the PTA. Kristen talked about it a little bit. We have, they have good ideas. They seem very, and they're excited about upcoming year. I know there's some events already on the calendar. One of them, I think, I don't want to give it away, but I think there's roller skating involved. And last hour when I was in third grade, I know my kids would love it, but if I have the skills now that I had in third grade, I'm ready. So, but again, if we can do some things that both buildings will benefit from, you know, the PTA was interested in. Set it put together when, when we can. Okay, the master schedule is, is done. A lot of time, we can't really move on to the next thing until that's done. And, and that's a pretty big piece of the summer. So that's done. The two-hour lay schedule is done. And Amanda and I have, you know, transitioned completely into our new roles. We're in our new offices and we've, we've been rolling every day. It's, it's been, of course, it's very productive. And last, uh, teacher work week, we're going to try to school when we can to honor the teachers' time and get them in their classrooms and get them planning. So if we can present to both staff, for example, safety, you know, we can add just one meeting. I have to have two and we can get the teachers, you know, in classrooms where they want to be. We're going to try and do that for them. So, but that's it. I don't want, I don't want to repeat some of the things, a lot of what Kristen and people said, we're doing the same thing. I didn't want to say the same thing, but, but that's it. We are, so.
It's a lot.
Yeah. Thank you and congratulations on your new role.
I'm looking forward to a good year. Thank you.
Thanks to everybody for your updates. Appreciate it.
Okay. I'm sorry. I'm told now too. So we are going to item number 10, finance items. Hello, Ms. Mills.
Good evening, Madam Chair.
How are you? All right. What you got for us?
First, I just want to say a quick thank you to all of y'all for allowing Courtney and I to restructure Finance Department. We're really excited about the group we have and the structure that we have in place and look forward to supporting the division. I just wanted to say a quick thank you to y'all for that support. The real reason I'm here is for a budget amendment. The division was awarded two grants, one for school security officer, which we're, were awarded for security officers. And the other one was for a school safety personnel and programming grant. That allows us to have a lead security officer and a couple, a little bit extra for some equipment if we need it. So it helps by one or two of the weapons detection systems. That grant amount for them both together is $325,000. So the request is for an additional appropriation for that $325,000. There are local matches for both grants. One is $91,800. But we put SSOs into our FY26 budget. We simply don't have to make their salary. We have that budget already there in FY26. We can use local. Same with the SSO position. There's a 57, 375 for that grant, but we had that position in the FY26 budget. So we would use that salary to support the local match. I have been told we do have to apply for this every, it's not a gift that we will get this year every year. However, it appears that after you get it one year for the next four years, it's pretty consistent and pretty reliable that you will get it. We just, in the future, we'll, and to support those afterwards on there. Any question on those two?
Okay. So who's the properly second? All the favorites say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. It's done. Thank you, ma'am.
Just, we just wanted to get in front of you guys and let you know that we're keeping an eye on the federal increase on some of our title grants. The freeze is that affect up from Title II for professional development. Title III, English learners, and Title IV, which is a program that supports student academics. Together, those three grants are about $81,000 that we get. That's what we got in '25. We do have award year '25, so last year fiscal year, that we can roll pretty much all of those ones forward. So the whole $80,000 will have to support this fiscal year. That's on, that's frozen. And that's due largely to pandemic funds where we could use that in place of those title grants last year. Since all the pandemic funds have run out, we're not, but we're lucky enough that we do have those 25 funds. We have FY26 to help us during this time of, um, they still are under review. We still might get them. It's just not, some information coming out in regards to the title funds. Partly because we get some federal funds that's on free for adult education. As of right now, FY26, the year we're in right now is frozen completely. The best is not placed in any month for adult education. And then FY27, so next year, they have completed the upgrade. So just something that we're keeping our eye on and we'll be able to update it as we get more information. We have sat down with leadership and get a plan together of what that progress looks like. And once we have a final one, we'll bring it to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any question?
No.
Thank you for keeping an eye on that.
Thank you.
Okay, we're hoping. Number 11, nutrition.
Madam Chair, it's me, Ms. Harris, away this week, and she wishes she could be here to answer your questions. She says, and she can present the menu item. She's got up her sleeve, but happy to answer any questions if you have them. We just appreciate all the work that Ms. Harris does to prepare for meals each day.
Just tell her she has to bring those new samples for the August meeting.
You heard it first here. Very good.
All right.
John.
So we're moving along to, there's nothing to prove in that one, right? No. We're moving along to item number 11, the technology update.
Okay, Madam Chair, we are pleased to introduce to you this evening, Jason Ruffey, our Director of Technology. Actually returns to us after a two-year vacation. We are very pleased that he is with us and happy to have his expertise and his commitment back to this role. And I asked him to spend a few moments tonight and say hello to you, but also to share a little bit about what the technology team has been doing this summer. And so, Mr. Ruffey, welcome and congratulations.
Hey, Dr. Wagner. Good evening, school members. Dr. Wagner, Ms. Hutchinson, I want to give you a shout out. Good evening. I just wanted to take a few moments to highlight the great work that the technology team is doing this summer. But first, I just wanted to acknowledge that a few friends, Richard Bullock Schools, who are listening this evening. I just wanted to acknowledge and thank them for the two years that we worked together at Richard Bullock Schools. Fantastic 36 staff members that I oversaw. We're a wonderful group of people who work very hard. And I hope, and I told them this as I left, that the senior leadership and school board will support them in future years with resources and funding. So thank you to them. We can go to, yep. So we're going to highlight three of our bigger projects that we, for the summer, and then go over some items that we do, kind of our home deals that we do each summer as a team. The first one is a great partnership that Tina Rudd started when she became the Director of Human Resources. And we knew, we now do a new staff onboarding program where we work with each new staff member individually, where we have meetings in one-on-one. Great work that Teresa Robinson with the New Resource Team and Courtney Mitchell with the Finance Team. These appointments with each of our new staff members, bringing them in with benefits, compensation, any questions they may have. We also bring their laptops, get their badges ready for them. Go over questions, want to network, just so that they feel comfortable with their new device and have the summer to kind of get things together and start looking at items like our learning management system candidates, getting the power things like that to get ground running with the new teacher. Big shout out to Ian, Ethan, and Ray, who have worked really hard in very quick time to get these devices ready for the teams. And for Courtney and Teresa, these people are highly, three of the, how efficient they've been to support them as well. So kudos to them. The next one is the Chromebooks Refresh. This is exciting news. At Hamilton Homes, we have purchased a new Chromebook from the EPSA National Grant, offered in a five-year period. We used two years of our funding to purchase the Hamilton Homes Chromebooks. They have it on there at the warehouse with the vendor who takes care of it. Technology Integration Food Group, which is now converged with Richmond, Virginia. They are wanting devices until the week of August 4th. They'll be delivered here. They'll be prepped and ready to go. So we are ready for our one distribution of course to the schools. So we're excited about that. The one we highlight, the Hamilton Homes parents and students, over the three years that they had the Chromebooks, we had a 90% contributor, which is wonderful. Which means out of the 600 units, only 60 were lost or broken beyond repair over those three years. That is a highly high number. Where I came from, that number was not so high. So I just do want to shout out the staff, the parents, the students who really care for those devices. The good news is, is those are really good working units that we have passed into clinical spring. So they can continue their work as well. So big kudos to them. And then the big one that Dr. Wagner told Sean earlier is we are transitioning to a new cloud-based phone system. It is a voice system. The phones arrived last week. Mr. McBride, who is our network technician and also our one-to-one support for Hamilton Homes, did a test with the vendor on Thursday and 100% successful. We were going to call out. We did a one test, we did a local test, a long distance test. They were great. So we will start the transition on Monday. What that means regarding to listening, it's, is on Monday, you will not be able to call into the system. I will make the transition, but we'll be able to call out. So if we have the emergencies or local calls we make, I'm sure our staff. So, well, that will probably take 24 hours as we transition from Verizon to this new system. Should be up on Tuesday morning. We'll be sure to have calls and post hours as well. Once the system is fully up, I want to touch on a few things. One is there are two items that we need to update. I don't want to mess these up. So we're basically updating our system for two reasons. One is the carry call that was put in place, which requires all new phone systems that we want to call 911. Having a dial line, which is, you know, you're used to that. You're calling 911. But for systems like our old, if you had a dial nine, it would end to the world, 911. So this is, will allow us to, from any phone within the district, be able to call 911. There's also a programmable button, which is a certainty button. It's a one button as well. The other piece is, I always miss this up, so let me get to it, is that we have to have pinpoint location where they're called. Currently, the way the system works is it gives shareholders, our university personnel, just a general address of where they're calling from. On this new system, I'll be able to pinpoint in, actually we have a pinpoint direction to where that phone is located in every building. So we give this room number. It also has directional codes within the building, like the east side, baseball, some of those type of things. Fully updated from, and it will help us start on, it's all included. But it'll be a much more sophisticated system when it comes to the management. And another big thing is, is that this transfer means if there's an emergency or we're closed for some reason, but we still need to answer phones. Those ones can be imported to any public, private, it's other than that. So technically, for instance, if we have a SODA and we need to do work with Toma, we can get in there, we can transfer the cell to other locations. If we had an emergency, where we had to, maybe a church, or we had parents in those situations, those ones we transfer to the church. And if parents are calling to the church, we can have this set even. So that's a huge thing for this new system. It's something we used in my previous school, for the last year and a half, and made worlds of difference. It's in Urichin, a lot of times, but the construction, the effects, we had lots of down going on. But it was very easy to, it's only ten seconds, maybe five days from our cell, it's a world. Very, very, hopefully, hopefully, you got that provided, just depends on Verizon and where you're standing on this. And last, I mean, it's just some funny new list, one list that the team works on throughout the summer. A lot of times, this summer, busiest time for twenty-seven and our teams, because we are prepping, closing out the whole school year, preparing for the new school year. Keegan Shagwell behind me, I want to give him a big shout out. He's worked really, really hard to update our system. We're working on getting all four schools. We are focusing on the cool spring plan, so we're starting working on Hamptons Homes. We utilized a lot of our security plan, purchased some fences, not giving the local budget as much. But there will be time to come to Dr. Wagner and talk about some counter plans, or try to get a five-year plan, and discuss the follow-up. And then the last slide, if there's any question you think I can answer, besides being back, I learned a lot from Richmond Schools. I went from twenty-one hundred to twenty-one thousand. And so, big responsibility and I learned a lot, but I'm very excited to be back. Some of them, it's exciting for me to be back, but they'll be there. Any questions I can answer?
Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you very much.
Okay. And we're moving right along to item number thirteen, a closed session if necessary. I don't see any questions, anybody? Okay, item number fourteen, which is a personnel report and supplemental personnel report. I entertain an emotion to approve those.
We should approve.
Okay, can I get a second?
Okay.
All right, properly second. All of favorites say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so the personnel, supplemental personnel report approved. We can go ahead and hire some folks. All right, next is item fifteen, matters from the board. Do any of the school board members have any matters they want to, no? I know we're told, but I need to, I need to run a couple of things past us, okay?
I think Mr. Farmer has an item.
Oh, I'm sorry.
As a result of the student discipline hearing, during closed session, I move that student seventy-five, one, zero, zero shall be long-term suspended through fall semester of the two thousand twenty-five to two thousand twenty-six school year, with the opportunity to attend the impact program.
Second.
Lindsay, second.
Lindsay, second. I'm sorry, I'm told. All right, so it's been moved and properly second. I think we need a roll call, don't we? Because two of us.
Yes, yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Roll call.
Mr. Farmer?
I'm sorry. Yes. Oh, okay.
Mr. Wassenberg?
Aye.
Ms. Atkins?
Abstain.
Ms. Catlett?
Aye.
Ms. Frey?
Abstain.
Thank you.
All right, so first of all, I got an email, I think we all probably did, that we have been confirmed to participate in the national night out, which is August the fifth, August the fifth. So we probably need to chat amongst ourselves and try to think of what we're gonna do, how we're gonna do it. I guess there's, we have to.
We need to move our work session.
We already did.
We already did, okay. Yeah, we canceled that.
Let me mark it off my.
Yep, mark it off the, um, then, the second thing that I want to share with everybody is, because we're gonna talk about some things with that. Maybe we'll get with time, but do things, still, um, is also from the DSCA. They get Welcome Back to School Champion for Impact, and they ask each school board to do something special for our students, to welcome our students back. I hear lots of opportunities where they're having stuff. I know many of you have children that are in the schools and going from open house to open house, but I think that it's important that we do something to welcome our students back. So if you have an idea, you just send me a email or send me an text, and we'll try to find something to do also to welcome our students back from the school board. Maybe a video. Hey, that might be a good idea. Y'all, y'all want to do a video? Yeah, we could do that beforehand and maybe just, okay, we think. All right, we'll, we'll talk about that. Do some texts, emails, maybe. Then, there's not all together, Lindsay, not all together. Okay, then, for the DSCA delegate assembly, in reading about the delegate assembly, I believe that I am the delegate to the assembly, but because I am the DSCA Regional Chair, I can serve as the delegate. So we need to pick a delegate and see if this Catlett wants to remain the alternate delegate. You want to be the delegate, you want to be the alternate. We need to make that decision by August twenty-ninth and get into schools. Nothing we have to do like this minute, but I need you guys to be aware of it so that we can submit that information, okay? Um, also, I know that we had a discussion about hosting the regional, Eastern Region Board next spring, and I don't recall what our aim was. Did we say yes, we would like to do that? We did. Okay, so that's a yes. I also have to report that to the DSCA, so I'll go ahead and take care of that. There is a conference coming up on September nineteenth for the DSCA, it's a legislative advocacy conference, uh, conference, September nineteenth. There is also a conference coming up on June, I'm sorry, July twenty-fifth, that is the education conference. So if you're interested in either one of these conferences, please let Amber know. She will have to rush to you.
Give me the July one again.
July twenty-fifth.
And I probably, that they probably already put that date because that's to date for now. So if you can tell me that tomorrow, if, so I can try and see if you're ready on the twenty-fifth, that would be good.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. So I know that tonight, one of the things we got was our list of trainings and whatever that we've done with the DSCA. There is also one of the DSCA website, there is a DSCA university, which we can go in and do the trainings and whatever on our own and get support for that as well. They should have also mailed or emailed you the new password this year for the DSCA. You just need that. A lot of the training is for the DSCA university or for you. You don't have to pay.
And if you can't sign, that has to face that on video.
Thank you.
And then the conference for them in November is still the nineteenth through the twenty-first, right?
That sounds correct. The nights, that's, uh, Daniel, the third, like, Thursday?
Yeah.
Thursday and Friday. Then, the last thing that I have, and I know y'all are tired, the last thing I have is, there are several awards that the DSCA gives. One that we can't do anything with this year, but I'm gonna send it out. I would like for us to, because we've done so many of these things already, to become a board of distinction or to become a school board of honor. And we can do that by just checking the box with some of the stuff that we've already done and submitted before. Can't, probably can't do it this year, but we can check the box with the things that we've done, because it's a two-year commitment for those things. And because we all will be attacked again next year, we'll be able to do that. So I want us to become one of those, a board of distinction or get one of those honors. I think we can do it. We're a good board and I think we can come up with that. Then, um, I think I had shared that there are two individual honors that they have. One is the DSC Advocate for Education Award. That award is due, and it's for a person, is due by September the fifth. To be nominated for that. And there is also the DSCA School Board of the Year, which, I'm sorry, School Board Member, Regional School Board Member of the Year recognition. And that one is due by August the eighth. The application is due by August the eighth. And I have previously, people, is it all y'all's sneakers? I'm sorry.
I did. Did anybody? It wasn't staff.
Okay, so, um, what? Um, one of the items that we're passing out tonight is my, um, my resume, my community service resume, and the information on the, um, Regional School Board Member of the Year Award. And the other is the DSCA Advocate of the Year Award. Um, and if the board feels that I am worthy enough, that I've done a hard work for you and for the community, I would like to be nominated or have my name nominated for the Regional School Board Member of the Year Award. Feel free to ask me any questions, to say anything you want to say. If you say no, we don't have time for this tonight because we're all cold. I understand and we can move on. We'll work on stuff for next year. Well, it's due by August eighth, correct? Well, we don't have another meeting. It has to be a unanimous vote.
Actually, I think for a regional school board member of the year, it has to be a majority vote. That one, I think it says that on the application.
Well, I'll, I'll make a motion to vote Vida Fisher as National School Board Member of the Year.
I'll second. Should move to properly second? Should I have done that?
Probably not.
Lindsay. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no. And congratulations.
Thank you, ma'am.
I welcome.
So, and.
Good work.
Good work.
I'm happy to take care of that on behalf of the board.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, one other thing that I failed to mention, I have talked to all of you about my, my work with the Corners and the, um, the Dolly Parton, the Dolly Parton Imagination Library. I am happy to report that we have an affiliation number. I am now just waiting to get our nonprofit postage granted. And hopefully, we will be signing children up for the Dolly Parton Imagination Library in King Wom County by September, or in September. I'm so excited. It's hard for me to sit here and not to hump it down, but I'm excited. I'm excited about that. This has been hard work. I want to thank you guys for all your support, for your help, you know, for your donations, for everything. It's just been wonderful. I think it'll just help King Wom County improve our literacy scores in the future, get our kids ready for reading. I can't wait to come. I'll be there. I can't wait to come to some of the schools and register children, because you know, when they come to open house, someone's gonna have little brothers and sisters, and this is for children from zero to five. We'll get a free book every month until they're five years old. I'm done. Anybody have anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Wait a minute, before we adjourn, I'm sorry, before we adjourn, where, where is the last page? Yes, the announcements. Well, thank you. Page twelve, New Teachers Academy, August fourth, National Night Out. We've already talked about that at the King Wom High School parking lot, August the fifth, from three to eight. All teaching staff are going to return on August the sixth. Open house for all schools, October thirteenth, I'm sorry, August, August the thirteenth, from three to six. First day of school, woo, August the eighteenth. And our next regular school board meeting will be August the nineteenth, with closed sessions starting at five, and then open sessions starts at six. Now I'm done. Now I'll take that motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Thank you and thank everybody online.